I pleasure ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Hafey?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Hopstutter?
Here.
Poland?
Can we have a motion to excuse Devon from tonight's meeting?
I so move.
Second.
Hafey?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. Do we have any visitors at the West Coast Council? May we have a motion to suspend the reading in a minute?
I'll make a motion, Khan.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Thank you. Bill Resolution two thousand twenty-two days twenty-three. Any questions on the bills? You have a motion to pay?
So moved Vaughn.
Khan, second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Chief?
I don't know if we can add this per executive session?
Thank you. Mr. Troyer?
All right, Designer Review Board met last week and approved sign requests from Fifth Corner Cuts Barber Shop. New barber shop here in town, thirty-four South Clay, uh, Suite G if I remember correctly. And then also eighty-seven West Jackson's putting up an awning and doing some facade repairs. P and Z met, recommended approval of a street vacation from Myers Avenue, Mayor's Avenue, however you say it. Uh, it's a completely undeveloped street up in the northwest part of town. It was never developed. But it is platted, and this is just the remaining portion that's not been vacated previously. Part of the procedure on that, we need to set a public hearing. Um, I assume we do. The property owner owns everything around it, or the, the petitioner.
Let me check there's the procedure. I don't remember us having public hearings. You have to run it through P and Z. Let me check.
Should we wait on, okay, there's no rush on it. Okay, we'll put that one on hold. Uh, Melway was in last week, week and a half, two weeks now. Uh, the, the pavement is all down, the resurfacing work's all down. Do have the manhole repairs to complete yet. There's five manholes. We're gonna have them adjust. Uh, South Washington Street and then one on Maslin Road, bring those up to grade. And that'll wrap that up for the year. The sidewalk project, the ODOT sidewalk project, the engineer is submitting all the final, uh, drawings. Next steps will be, right away is all done now. Um, acquisition, utility relocations will be the next step and then hopefully next spring. Yeah, late spring, summer, put the project out to bid through ODOT, contractor selection, construction.
So the utilities are still going to be moved yet this year?
Um, that might be ambitious.
Okay.
Hopefully we can, but depends how quickly, every, there's milestones, every time. You can't move to the next step till ODOT approves the previous step, so it's all, it's all gotta fall in line.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, nothing really on the demolitions, just county did select an asbestos testing contractor, get them in, test those properties. And then hopefully get the bid, the actual demolition bids out fairly soon.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do we have any idea when the next round is for the demolition? I thought there was.
There was two rounds. I do not know in the second. I don't. I just know ours were in the first round, so I was glad for that. The Halloween parade that HDM puts on that the Eagles sponsor is October twenty-sixth. They're requesting permission to close South Monroe and Court Street for the lineup. That's where they stage all the kids and the band, and then they end up back there after the parade for the awards and passing out the goody bags and all that, so. I'll make a motion to close the street.
Second.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
And Boo in the Berg, there are, HDM's also requesting permission to close Canary Alley. This is the north-south alley between North Washington. It's, runs parallel between North Washington and North Clay from the alley behind like our building here. Uh, they wanna close it from Clinton Alley to the rear of CSB's parking lot for that night.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Then the last thing I had just came in today. Well, sorry, these two things. The excavator that's working with Brennan Barbie on the amphitheater, uh, they've decided to look into turf, artificial turf for the tiers. Uh, can pass this around. There's three grades, about two grades and then seconds. Uh, to do all the tiers, it would be anywhere from fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars depending on what selection would be made. Take a look at that. This is the middle, middle grade, be very similar to this. This is a LM seventy. What they proposed was LM fifty. She said it'd be a little shorter than this, and then you can find the others, the other one in here as well. I don't know if that's something. I don't, I'm not asking for the money for it. I just, I think long-term it might be a good idea. Just wanted to get your thoughts on it. I would, Brennan was unable to be here, but I would anticipate soliciting donations again for a turf project at some point. It could be done next year. It wouldn't have to be done this year. Just, you know, something to think about, consider, pass those around if you'd like.
It said something about the turf can melt by E windows, sun reflecting. What's that mean?
I'm assuming since, you know, synthetic material, it can, if you get it hot enough, it'll melt like anything else. I really don't know.
It said that peroxide is good for thirty days, so if there was a fundraising project, we would need to get another proposal next year.
Yeah, it would go beyond, yeah. That's pretty typical anymore.
Wonder if it's slippery when it's wet?
I would assume it would be a little bit.
And, and you anticipate her being willing to continue the project beyond, you know, into this fundraising stuff too, or?
I don't know. I, I don't wanna volunteer her for anything else, but I, I mean, it would make.
Well, we can though. I mean, you need a motion for that or?
Do it, Brent.
She's done a lot already, so.
She has done a lot.
You know, I didn't know if this is something we wanna look into further as a potential fundraiser type thing or or direct her to see if there's interest there, or, you know, I don't know.
I mean, from a mowing standpoint, this would be a lot better option than, than not to browse.
This is gonna help us in the lawn.
It would, it would.
I'm sorry.
How do you think of holding the lawn chairs in?
I don't know. I, I honestly don't know. Um, I do, what I do know about it is it comes with a fifteen-year warranty. As far as maintenance, the only thing they say is you have to keep within a reasonable amount of time any debris, leaves and sticks from a cumulonimbus. Blow them off, pick them up. Um, they don't want organics laying on it and decomposing and it'll affect that stuff, obviously. It'll rot it. I, yeah, I think long-term it would be the way to go, but if, if it can be push mode too, if it's grass. Something to think about.
How, how much push mowing are we currently doing as part of the?
Uh, virtually none.
I was gonna say, I couldn't think of any places.
We used to do a little bit around some of the utilities locations, but that's all pretty much gone now.
Would that be, like if you're sitting on the block where your feet are in between each tier?
Yeah, beyond the flat areas of the tier.
So if you don't put something in there, you're gonna have weeds and?
Yeah.
Free lawn, lawn chairs, they sit up in there.
It's wide enough to put lawn chairs in?
According to a quick internet search, artificial turf is less slippery than grass. This might be from the artificial turf.
Big turf at it again.
That's right. That's the first time I've ever heard of big turf.
I, I talked to Renee and, and get her own thoughts about.
Okay.
When you need something down there, I would think, it's gonna be mud. But I also feel like at some point she's gonna wanna move on from this project. This is her Eagle Scout project. She'll be an Eagle Scout, so she's not gonna wanna continue. Right.
Or president.
I guess, you know, what you mentioned, this would benefit us just from a maintenance standpoint. Do we have a line item has some funny we could secure to proceed with this?
Off the top of my head, I can't, yeah, I don't know.
I'm starting to key on next year's preparations.
I understand, I understand. Just asking.
And it might even be useful to just wait and see what kind of maintenance it actually requires. You know, is it going to be a royal pain or is it?
Well, I, but if you seed it, you'd almost have to remove it to put this in, I would think.
Yeah, that needs to go on a stone base. They're gonna put in, is my understanding.
They're gonna go ahead and install a stone base with the, with the current project?
I believe so, unless I misunderstood. Uh, Melinda Ravers, who I talked to.
What would you use, pea gravel or what?
Like number eights, a little bigger, yeah.
So then the maintenance for that would probably just be a couple times a year spraying.
Spraying, yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't be very comfortable peeling. Well, we can, I'll follow up with her and see if that's something she wants to take on or give you guys time to think about it as well. Uh, the last thing I have is some numbers, very preliminary. Excuse me, about the, the capital improvement funds we've talked about previously, uh, the, the spreadsheet. So I'm still, we're still trying to figure out, these numbers weren't coming out right, and the reason for that is there's multiple accounts in the system that would have multiple debt services. So like, if you own a duplex, it may be one meter, one account, but there's two debt service charges. You get one for each unit. So we're trying to pin that number down, which if you go through town, start thinking about, there's a lot of them. And trying to figure out exactly how many there are, or close to how many there are, so we can give a more accurate number. But what I did was just took the, the number of accounts as of the nine twenty-three billing and just did a breakout of the, the top line, or the second line down, I guess would be the current setup based off of what the debt service was. Forty-five ninety for commercial accounts and one eighty for industrial. And just, you know, on down through, you can follow, just to show potential revenue. That, these numbers will be higher if, if you decide to do something with it because of those units that I was talking about. We're consistently bringing in closer to eighty, eighty-two, eighty-three thousand on debt service, and that's where I kept going back.
For the residential?
For the total.
Oh, for the total?
Yeah.
Okay, so rather than sixty.
It finally clicked that, well, we've got, well, best housing, for instance, is one account, seventy-two units for debt service. So that's a huge one right there that would, you know, would have been in here, so. And then Nate Skolmich put the other sheets together. Uh, he just tried to go down through everything. These are very rough estimates. It's, it's not our best guess at this point of items that are ongoing and upcoming for you to consider.
I went down through those and kind of quickly did them into now, five years, ten years. And the five year is pretty sparse, the ten year is pretty sparse, but the now is almost everything.
It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
You looking for an answer on this by next billing cycle, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause after, after this current billing cycle, we're gonna have enough funds in there to pay the loans off over the next four years, three years. So the January? January bill. The January bill. That's what you need to decide. We need to have that figured out for this.
When, when we get a better idea of the actual units, total units, I'll send that out on something like this with just those updated numbers. So you can eas, you can play with whatever, you know, it's pretty easy to do.
Do we need to have another committee meeting prior to the next village council meeting?
Again, once, at this point, there's, I don't know that there's much point till we know closer on, on the units. That would at least give you a full picture of what you're dealing with.
You'll have it by the next council meeting?
I was hoping to have it by tonight, so yeah, I would hope we'd have it by the next council meeting.
Yeah. I suggest we just wait till we get the numbers and decide if we need to have a committee meeting or what do you do?
Is there any way we can get a grant for any of this stuff?
A lot of it, no, until it fails. No, obviously line, line replacements and things like that, yeah, we're trying, we're always looking at those. Uh, I and I potentially, that's a big one, and that, we don't have a price on that. That's a huge undertaking. What that typically involves is you go in and quadrant off or divide town, go through and smoke and di test every connection to the sewer, see where they're coming out, and then you also do all the mains to see what kind of leakage and infiltration there is. And then you come up with a plan of how to address it, and that's where the real price tag comes in, 'cause that could be massive. Who knows? And then like Nate talked about at the, uh, Public Works Committee meeting, the lead, lead, lead service line project is, who knows at this point what that's gonna entail? For those, and I, I don't think everybody was here for that, um, federal EPA has mandated that all lead service lines be removed. As of right now, the way it looks, we have to identify where they are and then replace them. And that involves going in and actually digging up, potholing service lines to verify what material they are, which is a huge expense, just in that, and then the replacement of it yet. That's not a good project. That, that's a, that's a big one.
We really need to be aware of our metals, and I'm gonna say that because my daughter has a home in Akron, and Akron put in new lines, and the metal that was in the lines didn't like the connect.
The soils.
Connector metal.
Oh.
And the connector metal broke down, and her whole street had water in their basement because the metals corroded because they didn't. So we just need to be aware of what kind of metals we're using when we, if we, if and when we start replacing.
Yeah, we use plastic now.
Okay, that's good.
The good news is we know a lot for the last, you know, I, I, we probably have close to thirty, if not more, years of ass builds that we can go through and verify what was put in. All new construction is all plastic, so we know that. It's, it's everything else. All the, you know, we have a lot of old stuff in town still. And we do have some lead lines that we know about, so it's not like we can say we don't have any. Which is a defense some towns are taking, and I don't understand how they're gonna get away with it. That's their problem, but. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, to your point, I know in this area, we've got, not so much in Millesburg, but I know Berlin has had issues with copper. Some of the soils in certain areas of, of town just eat the copper within a year or two on new homes, and it, you have to go in and replace them all with plastic. Yeah, that is a concern.
Okay, is there any way we can combine all this with the water project on Worcester Road and then the Grant Street problem? If, I don't know what the USDA has that, you know, we could borrow from them. They're supposed to be able to lead us in other directions from what they told me.
I really don't know. Well, I mean, that.
I mean, with the Worcester Road project, it's not gonna get any cheaper. I think we gotta move somehow now. What's, close to seven hundred thousand now?
Oh, last thing I knew was six, but yeah, who knows by now. It's probably even higher. Ask me tomorrow, it might be higher again. I don't know. A lot of the items they would consider O and M type, operations and maintenance type items, I don't know how willing they'd be to fund those. Like driveways, that kind of thing. I don't, I don't think they'd fund. Usually your loans are gonna be tied to a useful life of the piece that you're replacing, and that's what determines your, your term. These are a mixed bag. I mean, you've got things that'll last ten years, things that'll last thirty, so I don't, I don't know how they view that.
Do you think the app, money or the commissioners will give us any money from the Appalachian funds?
I don't know.
I mean, five hundred million bucks out there. We just want a million.
Yeah, take a cool million.
I don't, I don't think the guidelines have been released yet on how, how that money's gonna be distributed.
Yeah. We do have the CDBG that they committed. Try to plug in with our ARPA funding. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of good questions there. I'm sorry, I can't answer right, right now, but they're definitely to look into.
Any other questions? Karen?
You should have received the September financial statement, and there's the acknowledgement sheet. And I did receive the Alcare dental renewal for January one. Um, it came in at one point one percent, which is great.
That's great.
The dental. They're still working on, uh, the medical. Hopefully have that in the next week or two. So hopefully next meeting they'll have some information for you on that.
That's great.
Thank you. Bob? Uh, no legislation, CD, some committee reports. Mr. Shoemaker?
We met last Monday. Trying to decide what we were gonna do about the forty-five dollar assessment that we're currently, residential customers are getting with their water sewer bill quarterly. I think we came to determination that we were going to alleviate it. And what else can I say?
Any questions for the chairman? If not, maybe we have motion to approve the minutes that were submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Your business?
I wanted to bring up again about a composting pile or composting out by the auxiliary building. We still have an interest in doing that. I, I'd be more than happy to be out there on a Saturday morning for a few hours. Have a shanty. Some heat, refrigerator.
Beer fridge.
Space wise, I don't know if we, we're gonna be able to do much out there. That's always been our problem is where do we, where do we do this?
I think it's a great idea. I just, I don't know where the room would be back here.
You know, what, I wonder about the properties on two forty-one in the future. We'd have those two lots there that we could maybe do something on.
Or is there anything we can partner with the county to have, you know, kind of a county-wide, you know, a, a county, ideally county run?
Money if we're doing that.
I could, I could certainly ask them.
Can the old fairgrounds be used for?
I know that's very limited on what you can use.
Regulation, I'm not sure. I, I know there's no commercial.
What about the swampy area down at Airport Park that we don't mow anymore?
Flooding's gonna be the, I mean, yeah, that, that'd be a spot if we can keep, keep our compost contained.
Contained.
If there is a flood, that's gonna be a disaster.
Getting out, getting out would be a challenge.
Yeah.
We could build up a lane fairly easily. But yeah, one flood, it could be all, all over the place.
Because ideally you'd want this fenced in area where you just can't go down anytime and dump anything.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, regardless of Shoemaker going down there sitting for two or three hours a day, you know, we could, we could get you a little umbrella or something.
I was.
Umbrella hat.
I don't think there's gonna be too much activity during the week. I think Saturdays.
Right.
I'd agree.
The biggest thing is just peel, just dump anything.
Right.
Right, yeah, I mean.
It's gotta be manned and locked.
Yeah, it can't be limbs and all that stuff. It'll never come, it'll take years to compost.
Yeah, I mean, we could, like I said, the location's always been the challenge on this.
You just wonder if the county would be open to anything like that. You know, they've got the, the recycling bins with cameras to keep people from dumping garbage there. If they've got that infrastructure in place, you wonder, is there any place on that property, on that kind of roundabout that goes through the, the, the recycling area? Would there be an area for?
I could ask them.
Yard waste.
Yeah, there's no harm in asking.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that'd be great.
Yeah, it is, it is a need in town. It really is.
It is, yeah.
Would we have to accept the whole county's composting then?
If it belonged to the county, I'm sure.
And you have to check IDs? If you're from out of the county, get out of here. I, this doesn't sound like fun.
Give me a compost ID badge.
I'm not sure compost smuggling is the issue that.
No, it's bringing compost from out of the county in. That'd be worried about.
Your old business. New business?
Um, I sent everybody except for Tom, I'm sorry, Tom, I don't have your email and I don't know why I don't. I sent everybody an idea of the, of the playground equipment that we're looking at. Um, I sent you all an email this evening.
I didn't get it.
I sent about, I don't know, four thirty maybe, five o'clock, this evening.
Oh, I have looked.
If everybody could look at that and we could discuss that at the next council meeting, just an idea. I have a couple of other.
Do you have quotes or, I mean?
I have a quote for the one that I sent you guys.
Can I ask what that quote is?
Well, with the extras or without the extras?
What's extras?
The extra would be like, uh, little baby swings that they have gotta put their legs in. That would be an extension with a little baby swing. There was another one, but yeah, the quote was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And that's the entirety. That's the mulch, the playground equipment, the extras, that's.
Is that rubber mulch?
Installation, everything.
Is, is that re, rubber mulch?
Not rubber mulch.
Or, or like what's up with the training center?
He said, he said if we want what's up at the training center, it's equal to what the equipment costs. So we went with wood mulch.
Is, is that the virtual tour that was on there?
Yes, yes. It, it, it takes you to a YouTube video and you can see the playground equipment and kids are playing on it.
So what's in the virtual tour would be? So what's in the virtual tour would be?
Would be, yeah, yeah. So just, everybody take a look at that. He sent me some other playground equipment YouTube videos, but the only quote that I have is from the one that I sent you guys. So if we're, um, I could send you the other ones, and if you're, if you guys like something else, that's fine. The other thing, he said he was willing to come in and bring us some large pictures of different playground equipment and talk to us about how much each was, but yeah, if we're gonna go with what they have up at the training center, he said it's pretty much equal to what the equipment costs.
Is the thinking that, that the grant that comes to, I think in June or July, to go after that?
That's what we were talking about.
Was the amount a hundred or a hundred twenty-five thousand, I forget what, it's been a while since I've seen that.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking it's less than that. Typically the counties are each allocated so much based on population, I wanna say it was around fifty or sixty last, last round. But I could be wrong on that.
I think there was, there was a matching percentage then to.
But it's a reimbursement grant too, so we'd have to front everything and then get reimbursed.
And I know that this is not something that has to get done right away, I would ra, I, I am in complete understanding that we have other projects that need done, that have, that take precedence over this, but I just wanted everyone to know that that's out there and you can all check it out.
Alright, thank you.
You know, one thing about leaf pickup, there should be a lot less leaves this year, I would think, from the storm.
Yes.
Oh, and just look, okay, okay.
It seems over the last couple of years, it's gotten, gotten less and less, we took down a lot of trees that were
Oh, he said it too, okay, thank you.
Way overgrown, yeah.
New business.
Nate, are we done with, uh, spraying for the year, have we used all our money for that?
Uh, I think we go through October typically.
Yeah, we still got, I don't know, three thousand or so left on the PO.
Have we decided when we're gonna start leaf pickup?
We have not. It'll be sooner than later, though.
Yeah.
It's, it's coming, seemed like the leaves really changed during the week here.
Yeah, they really have.
Couple of hard frost. Uh, just, I will not be at next council meeting, I'll be out of town. So if there's nothing else, maybe we have a mo, a motion to go in executive session, consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employee or official.
I'll make the motion to go under executive session.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hopstutter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Hoppy?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good evening.